Well, the picture that you will see on your screens right now is of the women who were part of the Constituent Assembly which drafted the Indian Constitution. There were fifteen of them out of a total of two hundred and ninety-nine members. Now, this was back in nineteen forty-six, but cut to two thousand twenty-three today, the Prime Minister said something very significant and perhaps concerning for all of us. Listen it.
Praram mein mahelaon ki sada sankha kam thi. Lekin dhire dhire mataon bhenon ne bhi is sadan ki garima ko badhaya hai. Is sadan, is ghadadadon ke garima mai bahut bada badlaaun aane me unka yodan raha hai. Is kaal khand mein karib chesho mahela saansad hone bhi is sadan ki garima ko badhaya hai dovo sadan ki. I Bharat ke loktantr ki taqat hai ki pachhiis saal ki umar ki chindramani murmu, chandramani murmu is sadan ki sadas se bari thi. Sira pachhiis saal ki umar ki sabse chhoti umar ki sadas se bari thi.
Well, six hundred women out of seventy-five hundred members so far. That reflects a lot on the journey of India's women in politics. Now, today, the Women's Reservation Bill was back in the news. This is a bill that proposes to reserve thirty-three percent of seats in the Lok Sabha and the state legislative assemblies for women. Talk of this bill is not new. It has been taken up seven times earlier as well. It was first introduced in the Lok Sabha back in nineteen ninety-six as the eighty-first Amendment Bill. But it lapsed after the Lok Sabha was dissolved. In nineteen ninety-eight, the bill was reintroduced in the Lok Sabha. This time also, the bill lapsed. Why? Well, no support. The bill was introduced again in nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand two and two thousand three, but it met with the same fate. In two thousand eight, the bill was tabled in the Rajya Sabha and was eventually passed in two thousand ten. This was supposed to be a ray of hope, but the bill was never introduced in the lower house and it lapsed with the dissolution of the house in the very year. Now, there hasn't been any movement on this bill ever since. Let me also give you some stats. India ranks one hundred forty-four out of one hundred ninety-three countries in the representation of women in the parliament. We even fall behind our neighbours Bangladesh, Pakistan and Nepal. Is it due to a lack of political will? Well, the answer might be a yes. Let's take a look at the supporters of this bill from among the political parties. The BJP, Congress, the left, Shiv Sena, Telugu Desam Party in Andhra Pradesh, AIADMK in Tamil Nadu, Bijju Janata Dal in Odisha and Assam Ganaparishad in the state of Assam. They're all supporters. Telangana's BRS has also been vocally supporting this bill.
Is samay Rajya Sabha mein ten percent or Lok Sabha mein chooda percent mahela saansad hai. Vidhan sabhaon mein mahelaon ki bhagadarhi das percent hai. Keen settar saal ke baad bhi aaj chooda, pandra, das ke underi hai. Mahela thi to ameri ki, main aur bhi aakre dekha hoon ki mahelaon ko dusre jage bhi aisa hi hoga. Ameri ki saansad mein do percent, Britain mein thin percent mahela saansad the. Aaj amerika ki saansad mein aathvaiz percent or Britain mein tethiis percent mahela saansad aaj hai. To isliye main aapse mujarish karunga ki is mahelaon ka jo bill hai, isko aap ye kar dijiye.
When our forefathers drafted the Constitution, there was a belief that when they gave equality to all citizens, voting rights to every citizen which other countries fought for, women of other countries had to fight for those rights. It was given to us as part of the Constitution, the belief that women will be treated at par with men. Unfortunately, over the years, women have been denied that space in power-making tables. So, this is a commitment that has been pending for over thirty years. It has been part of the BJP's manifesto. It is unfortunate that BJP party has not even lived up to its commitment, not lived up to its manifesto promise and continues to deny women a reservation or a seat at the power table.
Now, as I said, the BRS has also been vocally supporting this bill. In fact, today, BRS leaders held a demonstration in front of the Gandhi statue at the parliament premises, demanding the passage of the bill.
Women's Reservation Bill was introduced by Honorable Devagadaji in nineteen ninety-six, not the Congress Party. Two, yes, the Congress Party made sure the bill passed in Rajya Sabha for which all the women of this country have given credit to the Congress Party. But in the last sixteen years, Congress Party did not lift a little finger to do anything about this bill. And also, in fact, they were so arrogant that they even forgot to mention the Women's Reservation Bill in the twenty-nineteen National Manifesto of Congress Party. So, if you do not even care to mention this bill in your manifesto, that shows the kind of seriousness that you have towards this bill.
Now, those were the voices of those who support this bill, but who have been the opponents of the Women's Reservation Bill, starting with the Janata Dal United, the Rashtri Janata Dal and the Samajwadi Party, Asaduddin Uvesi's AIMIM and the Bahujan Samaj Party are all opposing this bill in the present form or completely. So, is it time for the Women's Reservation Bill to see the light of the day? I take this to my panelists tonight. I'm joined by Sonal Man Singhji, Rajya Sabha MP. Mahua Maaji, Rajya Sabha MP of the JMM also joins us. Sujata Paul of the Congress Party joins us as well. Shaina NC from the BJP joins us. And the lone male panelist tonight on this show is Gansham Tevari from the Samajwadi Party. Welcome to you as well and welcome to my all other panelists on the show. First to you, Sonal Man Singhji. Good evening, namaskar. You know, you've been very vocal about the fact that political parties are not coming to an agreement which is much needed for the Women's Reservation Bill to be passed and for women, for Indian women to get their rightful place in the decision-making process of this country.
Indeed, I have been very vocal, like my many other colleagues, female women colleagues. I think in this word reservation itself, arapshar, is a bit sort of demeaning. I've been thinking about it. It's like, you know, the male, the men will sort of hand down a few things. We're twelve percent, okay, now we'll make it fourteen percent. No, okay, we'll make it fourteen and a half. It's that kind of attitude that we've been seeing, you know, the report, the statistics that you were giving. I don't understand where is the glitch? Are men afraid of women or their capabilities or their intelligence, their power that they can wield, what they can come up with, their creativity, their experience? Why not take advantage of the other half? The better half, I would say, who manage a great households and whatnot? I think it's about time. Political wisdom should prevail on this issue at least. It's about time, high time. We cannot wait any longer.
Yeah, okay, okay. Before I go to the opposition today, let me go across to Shaina NC. Shaina NC, there has been a lot of speculation through the day-to-day that whether the government is getting this Women's Reservation Bill or not. The Prime Minister mentioned it. The Vice President also mentioned the fact that he's reconstituted the panel. Now, there are eight new members on that panel, fifty percent are women. Is the government getting the Women's Reservation Bill in the special session of the parliament?
Well, at the outset, let me please say, the political will that is required for the Women's Reservation Bill can be brought by only one person and that is Narendra Modi ji. He has shown time and again the guts of steel, be it an abrogation of Article three-seventy, triple talat, giving equality to women. You know, the list is endless. And I would only say, when he talks about beti bachao, beti padhaao, beti, beti ko sikhaao, ab wakt a gaya hai ki beti ko saansad mein leke aao. And clearly, he has worked in that direction tirelessly without kind of speculating as others have in the past. We know that we've been waiting since nineteen ninety-six. Twenty-seven years is a long, long time. We talk about empowerment of women when we are literate, educated and financially empowered. The time has come for us to be at par with our male counterparts in legislation. And I'm so honoured that we have a Prime Minister who is walking the talk. He is not just aimlessly talking about Women's Reservation, but he is taking proactive steps to implement. This in itself, I think, is a victory for every Indian woman in this country. And cut politics aside, lot of us have time and again spoken about the need for Women's Reservation, despite the fact that my party, the Bharatiya Janata Party, has thirty-three percent reservation in organisational posts. The need for us to make it to parliament, make it to assemblies, take up women's causes, speak proactively and as a voice. This is genuinely a tribute that the Honourable Prime Minister has given as respect to every single woman of this country. So, I am so hopeful that in parliament, everything goes through as per plan and I'm so happy with the cabinet also taking this proactive step. I'd like to salute the men of this country who have shown magnanimity and the parliamentarians particularly and who have worked with Honourable Prime Minister to envisage a reality when it comes to equality and not just lip service. I don't want to get into the past of which government did what from nineteen ninety-six to nineteen ninety-eight, to when the Congress was in power, to when the BJP was in power. This is a larger cause which is fifty percent of the electorate. And if we are behind our neighbouring countries like Pakistan, Nepal, Bangladesh even for that matter when it comes to representation, it's something to ponder upon. And I'm glad that the Honourable Prime Minister has had the political will, the conviction, the guts to take a decision. Clearly make sure that the beti, jisko padhate hai, aaj vo beti saansad mein netritva bhi karegi. Kyunki netri ki bhi kahani sunne layak hai.
Okay, okay. Sujata Paul, you know, the Women's Reservation Bill, we know that the Congress is supporting it. What would be your take on it?
Evening to all your panelists and the audiences. The first thing to remember is that the Constitution gave us all rights, all rights that are given to the men of this country. And therefore, these are our rights which have to be delivered to us. We cannot expect somebody to be magnanimous when it's given to us. It is something that we have been fighting for. If you remember that Rajiv Gandhi ji, when he brought the Panchaiti Raj, he gave thirty percent reservation for women in all Panchaiti Raj institution. Then, when you, if you remember two thousand ten in the Rajya Sabha, the Women's Reservation Bill was passed, even though there was a whole lot of opposition and we were part of a coalition government and it was very difficult to do it. However, if you remember in two thousand fourteen, Sonia Gandhi ji reiterated this promise that she made to the people of this country that we would continue to fight. And being a woman, when she said it, it meant that we were going to exert pressure on the present government to bring in this bill. And we are ready to pass it. Why? Not because there is some man who is magnanimous. There is a government that has to ensure that our rights are given to us. These are rights that we have been fighting for and these are rights that we should be given because we are the ones who are the majority of the electorate that ensures that we go out there and cast our votes. Women voters are looked at very carefully by every single party. So, when we are talking about what has happened in the past, again, I would reiterate that the Congress Party has always been trying to get this bill in, but after it passed through the Rajya Sabha, you know that our government went out of power and the BJP came in. But from twenty fourteen to now, the Prime Minister has waited, which is very, very concerning. But derai durustai. As long as it is passed, it is going to be a win for you, for me, for everyone because the kind of decisions that women take will bring a different aspect to the, to politics, to the country, to the progress of women and the fight that all women are making today. Because today, my last point, I would like to remind you of the fact that Putra Khanki beti, Ankita Bhandari, who was killed by a BJP leader's son, is waiting for justice and today is a first death anniversary. And I just pray and hope that this bill is actually brought in in this special parliament session and it is passed. Maybe we will be able to give justice to all the women out there.
Well, in fact, we are getting that confirmation at least, Sujata, that the cabinet has in fact cleared this Reservation Bill. Shaina will be able to tell us more about it. Of course, you know, we are of course getting this confirmation that the Women's Reservation Bill has been cleared by the Cabinet meeting which just, you know, was underway a while back. But before going to Gansham Tevari, let me first thank Sonal Man Singhji. She, I was told that she had to leave. So, thank you very much, Sonal Man Singhji, for joining us and sharing your perspective. Gansham Tevari, in fact, let me go across to Mahua Maaji first. Mahua ji, good evening, namaskar. Ab jab cabinet ne ek clear kar diya hai aur ek confirmation a gayi hai ki special session mein Women's Reservation Bill liya jaayega, take-up kia jaayega. Kya aapka stand rahega Women's Reservation Bill pe?
We are happy. Hum log to iska demand kar hi rahe the. Aur iska hum log swagat karenge, support karenge. Lekin hum log ke ek mang bhi hai. Kyunki humare yahan ST population hai aur humara tribal state hai, thirty-two tribes humare jharkhan mein rata hai. To tribal mahelaon ke liye, ST or OBC ke liye bhi, Women's Reservation Bill mein ek unki le bhi aaraksan ho. Varna jo upper class ki mahelaaye hai aur jo bahut, jinke pas paisi hai, bade burekretts ki wives, bade industrilist ki wives ya bade powerful log, jo bhi hai politician, to vo haavi ho jayenge. To iske liye bahut zaruri hai ki ST, SC, OBC mahelaon ke saath bhi nayay ho. To iske saath-saat unki le bhi agar aaraksan ho, to hume bahut khushi hogi. Kyunki humare state mein pichli bhaajpa sarkar ne ek jamin registri ke liye mahelaaye hai.
Par Mahua ji, aapko nahi lagta ki pahela road block humare le yeh hai ki politics mein humare le space bani. Humare, humara pahela road block yeh hai ki mahelaaye political space mein zyada se zyada aaye. Kotaa, OBC kotaa, SC ST kotaa baat ki baat hai.
Hota, nahi, aisa hai na ki mahelaaye aage to aaye, lekin jo shikchit parivar ki hai aur jo pehle se shikchit hai ya bahut upper class ki hai, agar sirf wahi aayenge to vah frustration hoga un mahelaon me, jo jamin se juri hu hai, grassroots level par jo kam kar rahi hai, lekin unke pas itne paisi nahi hai, utna power nahi hai, to unki pahunch kam hoti hai. To aise me bahut zaruri hai ki hum unke liye bhi thodi jaga rakhay bana kar. Kyunki pichli sarkar ne, bhaajpa sarkar ne, humare state mein, jharkhan mein, ek jamin ki registri ke liye ek rupee ka ek rakh tha ki ek rupee registration fees dekar, vo jamin apne naam se registri kara sakti hai. Usse yeh hu, ab aakre dekh lenge ki jo bade burekretts ki wives thi ya bade industrilist ki wives thi, unke naam se jamin khidaa gaya, korono rupee ke. Or state ko rajuswak ki hani hu. Or jin ko milna chahi tha, jinke baree me soch kar kia gaya tha, unme se bahut kam logo ne khidaa ya nahi khidaa. To is tarah se kuch na ho, iske liye hum log chaayenge, iska swagat hai, is bill ka. Hame bahut khushi hai, lekin saath hi unke liye bhi kuch socha jaye, taaki yeh bhi aage badh sake aur apni bhagadarhi nibha sake rajnitri me.
Okay, okay. Gansham Tevari, now that we know that this bill will be indeed coming up, what would be the take of Samajwadi Party? Do you want more and more women to come into the political space and work with you as your colleagues?
Good evening, Shayar, to you, my fellow co-panelist and the viewers, and a very happy Ganesh Chutusli to everyone. And thank you for the privilege to be part of this panel. First and foremost, I think no one can stop an idea whose time has come. I believe that the time in Indian democracy for Women's Reservation and Women's Leadership has been there for a while. And despite the political differences that we would have with the government, if this step is taken, this is a gigantic step, a giant step in Indian democracy, that more women will emerge in social and political leadership by this one step. There has been a legislative journey in this idea. We have been part of the aspect. People say that we have opposed the idea, but in essence, we have been demanding expansion of this idea to ensure that women from all categories, especially the disadvantaged categories, are part of that leadership league of women who will take India to the next level. So, in essence, every girl, every woman in the country and every family in the country stands with this bill and so does the party.
Okay, all right. You know, politics aside, to all of you in fact, I'd like to understand from specifically and initially, first of all, from the women on my panel, what does a woman get to the table when she becomes a politician, when she's part of the decision-making process, when she is a policymaker herself? What does she get to the table? Shaina NC, starting with you.
I think it's a very good question and all of us women are unanimous on one cause, that is the cause of women per se. Now, there was a program we used to carry out called Netri, Mahela Saansad aur Unki Kahaniya. The reason being that there are so many women parliamentarians who have emerged from Panchayat right to parliament and it has been a Herculean task for most. Why I constantly compliment our Honourable Prime Minister is because he is walking the talk. He's not making one more excuse saying, you know, dekha jaayega, we have maximum women in parliament today. In the Lok Sabha, we have eighty-two and constituting fifteen percent. In Rajya Sabha, we have thirty-one and constituting thirteen percent. That is no logic. The logic being that if fifty percent of the electorate is deserving to take on the larger cause of a specific gender and specific issues. Take for example, women who work during pregnancy. Take for example, our tribal sisters who have such Herculean tasks when it comes to just ensuring that their children are given the correct type of facilitation when it comes to menstrual hygiene or when it comes to education. All these are issues which need to be taken on and in a country as progressive as India. And India has done so well under the leadership of Prime Minister Modi. We talk about the growth from two thousand fourteen to two thousand twenty-four. Yes, educated women who have been a veil of ujvalao, mudra banking or janthan yojna or fasal bima yojna, ayushman Bharat, there are so many schemes. And when we talk about beti bachao, beti padhaao, why is there so much passion? Because we want that beti to reach parliament, to talk about the causes of not just tribals and scheduled cards and scheduled tribes. Yes, that is very, very important, but of every section and segment of society. So, I think it's a historic day, the ease with which cabinet has gone ahead and given the nod for the quota bill. I would like to personally thank every single stakeholder. And this is above politics. It is not about what which government did, where which bill lapsed and why it lapsed. As they say, derai durustai, lekin this was the need of the hour. And for a progressive country like India, that is on the global international map, watching the world, the world watching us, this is one more step in the absolute right direction. Clearly like to sincerely thank our Honourable Prime Minister for this.
Okay, okay. Mahua ji, aapse bhi wahi sawal, ek mahela politician, ek mahela leader, kaise contribute karte hai, kaise different hoti hai apne male colleagues se?
Dekhiye, mahelaaye management pe bahut tez hoti hai, chahe unke pas management ki degree ho ya na ho. Ek parivar ko jis tarah se vo chalati hai, bahut minimum income me aur bahut santulid dhang se, agar kam income hai, to vo usi me apne ghar ko chalati hai. Future ke liye bhi savings hota hai. Humare yahan tribal ladies, ghar me bhi kam karte hai, kheto me bhi karte hai, haat bazaar me bhi jaake, sab kuch bechte hai. To yeh unka anubhav ka jo daaraa, vo vyapak hota hai. Aur bahut hard, unke jevan me hardship hoti hai. To mujhe lagta hai ki vo jab politics mein aati hai, to vo chizo ko bahut hi samarpan bhaav si aur apne parivar ki tarah chalati hai. Aur iske karan, jahaan bhi aap dekhegi ki mahelaaye hai, vah, vo har cheez me bahut hi kushalta se, bahut barikhi se kam ko dekhte hai. Aur aap ek maine ke liye ghar ko, agar koi maike jati hai, apne ghar ko chod kar aur purushon ke hawale karke jati hai, jab ek maine ke baad us ghar me aap, vo wapas aati hai, to ghar ki kya steti hoti hai, saari chize bikri huay hoti hai. Vo ake phir doo chaar din ke under usko samhal leti hai. To mujhe lagta hai, politics mein bhi agar mahelaon ko moka mile aur abhi jin ko bhi moka mile hai, unhone karke dekhaaya hai. Aur is tarah ka reservation jab ho jaayega, to nishit roob se bahut apni baton ko vo pramuktha se rak paayenge. Unke hit me jo kanun banne hai, vo bana paayenge. Itne din tak vo pending nahi raayega. Bahut saari chize hai jo apne hit me mahelaaye hi bana sakhti hai, mahelaon ke darth ko wahi samajh sakhti achi tarah se. To mujhe lagta hai ki kisi bhi vikseth desh ko mahelaon ko saath me lekar hi chalna chahiye, taaki vo or aage badh sake aur balance rahe.
Yeah, you know, I'm not sure if Gansham Tevari being the male panelist here, the lone male panelist is really liking this discussion here, considering the fact that we've just, you know, Mahua ji has just said that men are not very good at managing the house and they leave it in tits and bits. But Sujata Paul, you know, this bill has, was first introduced in nineteen ninety-six. What has taken it so long? I mean, there is no political consensus, we understand, but so much of debate and discussion over the past so many years and yet, our leaders, our parties have not been able to pass this much-needed bill?
You know, there have been coalition governments before Mr. Narendra Modi's government since the time period that you're talking about, that is nineteen ninety-six. And that is why it has been very difficult to get people on board. But now, I think most of the parties who have opposed this bill in the past, even when we tried to bring it, have realised the importance of passing this bill. And you know, when you look at women politicians, you look at women anywhere, I mean, you all do such a fantastic job as journalists. And if you look at the popularity graph of our women journalists compared to male journalists, even if I'm saying it in front of Mr. Gansham Tevari, I hope he takes no offence to it, you'll always find that, you know, women bring a whole lot of dedication, sincerity to their job and they bring something new about, you know, about what they are doing. And whether you are from the BJP or the, or any other party, the TMC or the Congress Party, we are all women at the end of the day. And when a woman progresses, another woman always feels very great. And if you notice that, you know, when, when Prime Minister Modi spoke about the women in the cabinet, it was all of us feeling very great about it. And we might be debating about it, but one thing was sure that whenever, you know, we spoke about women doing something great, you look at it in the field of sports, we've all come together and celebrated it. And you know, women know how to multitask so much better. They have so much of empathy and compassion as well. They want everybody to be together. And even with women, you know, men, we respect our men.
Shaina wants to make a point, Sujata. Shaina wants to make a point, but before, you know, Shaina, before you make that point, I also want to tell Sujata, Sujata, I am one of those who, you know, keeps telling people that I don't want to be the multitasker that women are made out to be. I want to do one task at a time. Please don't make me into a glorious multitasker. I'm not a superhuman being. Shaina, please go ahead.
Forget multitasking, I think we can even triple task. That is the actual reality. The sad part is, up until now, we were not given the opportunity. Because how does a woman showcase her talent? She showcases her talent when she has an opportunity. And I'm not talking about tokenism. I'm not talking about a president here or a speaker there or a chief minister here or one odd case. I'm talking about the larger capability of women of India. And in this thirty-three percent reservation, you will see the competency that we showcase when we are given that opportunity. That competency you have seen in women leaders across the globe and Indian women leaders, I think, will surpass the others. So, having said that, I don't think it is about just having a token of fifteen, sixteen female chief ministers as we have had or, you know, few chief ministers and one odd president and one odd speaker. That is not enough. We need to be a part of electoral politics, decision-making, leadership qualities and I think we will even triple task we're required. I'm so grateful for this opportunity for all of us. And I think it's not just about one party or another. It is about the larger cause of women, women's issues and women's rights. So, today, Bharat has really arrived where it needs to be.
Okay, okay. I've also got that confirmation with Prahalat Singh Patel tweeting, mahela aaraksan ki mang pura karne ka naithik sahas Modi sarkar me hi tha, jo cabinet ne manzuri se sabit ho gaya hai. So, that brings us our confirmation. So, that brings us our confirmation that the cabinet has of course cleared this women's reservation bill and is going to be taking it up. Ghansham Tevari, when it does come to the Lok Sabha, will the party be supporting it?
Well, I think the news has just broken out and the spirit of the country is very visibly in consensus for women reservation bill. The details have to be, have to be read and I think the parliament will debate it definitely. That is one part. And I think with respect to the overall agenda, I believe that the power of democracy is, lives in its ability to represent. And a low representation reduces, weakens the power of democracy. So, behind a powerful country, behind every, as said, behind every successful man is a woman. But one can say, in every, every powerful country, a successful nation, successful democracy, leading it are also women. So, I am delighted that the government is taking it up and I think there is a lot of voice of consensus. There are powerful agendas related to women that are unfulfilled in this country. For example, the ability to travel in a secure manner in public transport across the country with rail or bus. For example, the high dropout rate, for example, the marital issues, especially the early age of marriage that is prevalent in India across many states. There is a large amount of unfinished agenda. With respect to women from education to employment to mobility, to financial inclusion, to property ownership, to having the presence in parliament and various social and political platforms. This one bill will definitely power a lot of these unfulfilled agendas. And they are, these agendas are good for the country and good for the women in the country.
Okay, okay. So, now we know at least one of the historic decisions, quote-unquote, that the Prime Minister talked about this morning of the special parliament session. Hopefully, that will be taken in the special parliament session. And I'm so glad that this time there was no fight, there was no ugly debate. There was only one party supporting the other and women coming out in support of each other and men too coming out in support of women coming into the political space. I hope this kind of discussion keeps continuing and propagating through television channels. But thank you so much to my panelists, Sujata Paul, Shaina NC, Ghansham Tevari and Mahua Ma ji. Thank you very much for joining us tonight and sharing your perspective.